All right. All right, so I will call this meeting to order. This is the working board meeting for Cook County School District 130. Today is Tuesday, December 9th. It's 5:30, no it is not. It is 5:38 PM. We are at the Eisenhower Co-op in Crestwood. And Dr. McKay has kindly agreed to serve as secretary for the evening. Dr. McKay, could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bynum. Mr. Dastmir.
Here.
Ms. Wilson-Lu.
Here.
Ms. Martinez.
Here.
Ms. McGinnis. Mr. Warner.
Here.
All right, we're present. We do have quorum this evening. We will move on now to the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as well.
All right, moving on. Our next item is public comment on agenda items. And we did not have any sign-in for public comment this evening. So we are going to move on to board member comments. Do any members of the board have any comments this evening?
My only comment is it was really great seeing the districts in the light parade. So I just wanted to say they came to also participate because it was just great.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? All right, I'll just add my thanks for those who marched in the light parade. It was a really nice showing for the community. All right, we'll move on then to Agenda Item 3. So we have two presentations. Our first up is our superintendent search firm, BWP. So I will turn the floor to you for the presentation. And then just to let everyone know, we will have discussion afterwards. So if you have questions, we'll be able to ask those at the time.
Well, thank you all so much for this opportunity to come in and meet with you. And hopefully we get an opportunity to help you find your next superintendent. For BWP, I am Dr. Sheila Harrison-Williams, a partner with the firm. There we go. I am a partner. I've completed over 40 searches. Maybe I can even bump it up a little higher now. I am a retired superintendent, retired out of Hazel Crest School District, right out here in the South Suburb. I was there for 15 years and I did three years in Lockport. So 18 years total. Then I went out to Arizona when I retired in 2019 and was the executive director for the School Boards Association out there. Came back because it was absolutely too hot for humans in Arizona. Could not handle that heat, so I came back home. And I'm fortunate, I was fortunate enough to land a new gig with IASA, the Illinois Association of School Administrators, as the field service director. And I work with new and early career superintendents in West Cook, South Cook, and Three Rivers. So this is my area. So home, South Cook has always been home for me when it comes to work. And with me tonight, I have my partner.
Hi, I'm Dr. Anne O'Leary. And we're happy to, Sheila's happy to be here and speak with you a little bit tonight. I too am a retired superintendent and partner in the firm. And I was just really close to you. I was before 3142. So basically, because I'm a fellow, so like Sheila spent a lot of time with South Suburbs and had a lot of good feelings and a lot of hardworking in this area. I'd be happy to work for you and try to find a superintendent for you. I've been doing searches for quite some time. Some of you heard when I came in, it was September 1st. It is my first day tonight. And I'm not going to tell you how old I am. But I've been old enough to have done about 200 searches. So I've been working with you and you've been part of our team. And we enjoy the work. We enjoy getting to know school districts and communities around school districts and finding that fit for your district, which is the firm that the district is still working for the district that Sheila came from. And so I too do independent search consultants. I'll go ahead with Omar if that's okay.
Okay, okay.
I'll turn it back to you.
Sure.
We have a third member on our team who is not available this evening. But he will be fully involved and he decided to be working with us too. And at the bottom of my page, you can see that is Omar Maschila. Omar is the current superintendent in Kingville District, 28th County. And when we asked him to write a bid on himself, he says he's an advocate for diverse and bilingual student success. He's bilingual, permanent in his home. So he brings that to what's in the project, very diverse teams to work with. Just a personal job. Omar's been with our firm three or four years. He's a senior superintendent. But we like to have the senior superintendent on our team because they're the ones talking about what can tap shoulder or ask a plan, what they know about this person. So it's a really good source for us, as well as a very familiar currently who's their current in education. So Sheila's going to stretch you off and I'll help you out and talk about the process.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, thank you all for this opportunity. These are the things that we're going to talk about this evening. Hopefully, we can answer these questions. I know they're running in your head right now. It's like, okay, who are you? What are you going to do for us? So that's what we're here for. We're going to talk to you about who we are as BWP and associates, what about our firm? And then your search consultants. Introduce you to your search consultants. And by the way, your search consultants would be?
You're us.
Us is what you get. What you see is what you get, except for Omar's not here. But you would love Omar as well. So we will be the search consultants. And then we will talk about the process, how this works. What is it going to look like? You get to tell us. We'll sit down with you in a meeting and you will tell us what you want this process to look like. And we'll talk to you about our experiences and what we know about superintendent searches. And you can tell us about what you're looking for and what you want to do and how you want this process to go. Whether you want a hybrid, you want to open, or you want a confidential search. We'll talk about all of those types of things. It will be customized to District 130. We do a lot of searches, but they're all different because the boards of education are all different. Then we will talk about recruitment. How do we recruit candidates for these positions? You know, we don't have a stable of candidates. Once we find out what you're looking for, then we try to match that profile with people that will fit the superintendent that you're looking for. And we're going to get back to that also in a little bit. Then we'll also set the search timeline. I understand that we're looking out to 2027, which is a good thing. It's not a bad thing at all. Your neighbor, right up the street, we're doing, I'm actually on my way over there. We're actually finishing up that search, District 126. They're doing the exact same thing. And the other, the opposite side of what they're doing is that they're going to bring their person in for a whole year to sit with the suit. So that's a difference. But what you're doing is not an anomaly and it's a good thing. So if that's your decision, that's a good thing. And then we're going to talk about why us? Why BWP? Why not the other firms? And what sets us apart? And so we'll talk to you about that. All right, the first one, BWP and associates. We are a national search firm, meaning we have a long reach. We have associates all over the country. And we are able to, we have colleagues and friends that we know that we're able to put the information out there. And they also make recommendations once they know what the profile looks like, what you're looking for in your next superintendent. Those connections come in handy. We have conducted over 500 successful searches. Many of them are right here in the Midwest, right here in Illinois. But we do them all over the country, like I said. We have a remarkable history of success. 99% of our placements complete their first contract. They usually get through them without problems. 95% of those placements are offered a successful contract. They're usually there for more than one term. Or if it's three years, two years, or five years, they're usually there for more than one. And not one of the people that we've placed in the superintendency have been released because of malfeasance. It's their, we do our homework. We make sure that the person that we're presenting to you is above board. They're clean, they know what they're doing. And we're not going to bring anyone before you that can't do the job. We hope to make the decision so difficult for you that you can't go wrong. Okay? Nearby and relevant work. These are some of the districts. I just mentioned 126, which is the neighbor. And these are some of the other districts that we've been a part of. I've actually served on the committees that, the teams that actually did the work. Home with Flossmore Prairie Hill School District. All of these are not too far. You've got Soft Village, just a little further east. Speed, Echo, Flossmore School District 161. Thornton Township Treasurer's Office, we just did that. West Harvey Dixmore School District, 147. We just did that one in May or June. Finished that up. We also did Chicago Public Schools. And then Cook County District 104. So a lot of districts that are very similar to yours. So the experiences are there that we bring, what we bring to town.
We know we're not in fact, we like Chicago, we like the superintendent because it shows you that we do really big districts as well as smaller.
There's small ones.
So I did work on the Chicago search, one of the people, Mr. Pedro Martinez.
Yes.
And also done school districts that are part of the district. And that's kind of the thought of it, is getting a perfect match for each, any of the districts that we're developing.
So I'm going to turn it over to Anne. And she's going to talk about the phases, the five phases. And you should have that in your book as well. So we're going to go through these phases and what happens at each stage. And this is how we get through the process, the search process.
And here are our search, I know you're going to talk to some other people as well. And that's why you should sort of take that some comparisons. The processes aren't a lot different. But I wanted to give you an idea, as for the first people talking, of what this looks like for you. There are phases to a search. And we've got up here Phase 1. So if we're lucky enough to be the firm that you choose, we're going to come in and talk with you very, I think probably the first of July. But we could also do it earlier if you want us to come even before the end of the year to have some conversations. And at that time, we're going to go through everything with you, the whole search. I'm trying to keep a little bit close to the microphone because I know I'm not like one of those. All right, let me see if I can get this. So, um. Thank you, ma'am. So this is where, in Phase 1, is where you get to tell us what you're looking for. And we customize, as Sheila was saying. So each search looks a little different. There are components of every search. But you may want to tweak it a little bit and we're good with that. Because you're the ones who know your district and your community. And we're glad to do that. We'll talk to you about the timeline, which I've got a sample later on in the presentation. Stakeholder involvement, as soon as very important to you. You haven't been through this process for a while. You've had a long-term superintendent. So this will be a good time to check back with your community. We'll talk to a number of focus groups, as well as your staff and your administration, and each of you individually, to find out exactly what you're looking for. And I would think that'll be different than what you might have looked for in the past because it's a new group of kids and it's a new group of board members here today. We'll talk about marketing, how we market the district so that you get the best candidates possible that meet your profile. Talk about a communication plan because one of the keys for us and you is that we stay in close connection. So we'll talk with you about a contact person and one of us will be a contact person and how we share out information to you. At the beginning of the search, we share out pretty frequently because we're getting things going. A little later on in the search, we're collecting applicants and recruiting applicants. We don't, you know, we don't necessarily have as much to tell you at that point. We're doing the behind-the-scenes work at that time. But we'll still come up with a way that we'd like to communicate with you so that you know exactly what we're doing at all times. Compensation range is the last thing that's on our list. Number 6, Illinois law requires now that every position listed also includes a compensation range. Now you can, we've done a lot of this lately. And we've got some districts who list a narrow range and some districts that list a wider range to give them more flexibility. Got plenty of time to think about that. But I want to make you aware that that's a requirement by the time we put your position up to be listed. That will have to include a salary range. Phase 2, remember I talked about the stakeholder groups? This is where we come in and do all the things I think I've already discussed. Talk to each of you individually, phone calls, usually half hour-ish. And then we'll be present in the district to talk to focus groups, parents, PTAs, community groups if you so desire, teachers of course, and administrators in the district. Each district tweaks us a little because of what's important in your community. So that's something we'll talk about at the planning committee. And we'll do a survey. We'll launch an online survey, which will be launched, we'll put it right on your website. Anybody that lives in your community can participate in that. So we'll have them designate whether or not they're a parent or a community member or a staff member. But you really want to, really, really like to see a good turnout on that survey.
Before we go on.
Sure.
Just to jump in here. When we start this leadership profile, we ask three questions. And we ask the same three questions of everyone, starting with the board. It's one-on-one with the board members and then the focus group. We ask you what's going well in the district? What are the strengths? What are you most proud of? And then we ask you, what are the challenges? What are the challenges of the district? What will the new superintendent have to be prepared to do? What to address on your own? And then we ask you, what are the characteristics? What are the traits? What are some of the things that you're looking for in your next superintendent? And they will tell us all of that. And then we take that information back and it's sent to us. We go through a rigorous process to pull all of that information together, not just from the board, but from all of those groups. And then the surveys is a totally different animal because it's not new verse in ours. But you'll see once you get it done, how, everybody can participate in the basic things. But parents, people that work, community members. And sometimes you're a parent and you're a community member. Or you may be, you know, you can be two or three different things. But it's important just to hear their voices. And the survey is set up in different languages. Whatever you have, whatever you want is to be set up. If you have multiple languages spoken in the home, they will work with you and say, you know.
What we like to say is, you know, you, all of you are involved in school. You know, we don't always get big crowds at our meetings and that sometimes frustrates us. But this gives every person, with that survey, you know, you can move on. With that survey, it gives everybody a person a chance to participate if they want to participate. So you can hold your head up high and say, we reached out to the entire community and I'm hoping that we would get a, you know, a really good return. We kind of really pump that to get people to participate. It takes them 10 to 15 minutes. So it is really good information for us. Phase 3, I kind of talked about a little bit, the advertising and the recruiting that we do, behind the scenes and the assessment of the candidates. Once we've got that profile put together and you have approved it as a board, then everything else, we're looking at who matches that? Who's going to be your fit? Who's the best person to do the work that you're wanting done in the district? And we review the applicant, we collect the applications electronically, review them. As Sheila said, we do a lot of reference checking with people we know to make sure that we've got clean candidates to present you. Now it's going to be your turn. So we've done all this work to pull together four to seven candidates. And I've done, the two searches I'm finishing with this fall, we've actually had seven people that we presented to the board. We have had such good applicant pools. I know that you feel like your ALSF1 is really great too.
We did. We got 65 applicants for ALSH, Hazel Crest, what was it? That's, that's, that's not, that's not true.
And I told you I've been doing this work for a while. I haven't seen those numbers in a really long time. So I think that tells us there's a really good talent pool out there. And we've been presenting seven in my searches. I don't know how many you're going to do it there, but six. But that's, that's good when we can bring you, you know, the top amount. Because we're not going to bring them to you if they aren't great candidates.
Right.
So I'm really.
We only get four if we're going to get.
Yeah. If we can only find four, that's what we'll give you.
Five or seven just because we can. Because, yeah, we only going to give you the best.
Yeah. As I said, then it's your turn to take over. So we will come in closed session. It's the only time we need to be in closed session. And we will talk with you specifically about each of the candidates we're recommending. And we'll do, provide board training on interviewing and coming to consensus and narrowing down your pool of candidates. We'll help you write questions. We'll bring sample questions for you to view. And we'll bring a rubric for you to evaluate the candidates based on that leadership profile we've talked so much about. So that's kind of where, now you're ready to go as a board. And we won't leave until we have you set to go. We'll get your schedule ready. And then you're off and running with two rounds of interviews. A first round where you would talk to all the candidates. Then narrow that down to a second round where you would talk with finalists. And then the hard part, finding that one person that you would like to move forward with. Phase 5, just some of the cleanup parts. We'll help you with getting the contract ready, the public announcement, transitioning, relationship building. And number 5, we're really proud of this at BWP. And we started this probably over 10 years ago. But we stay around and mentor the new person that you pick. We're available. We reach out to them at least on a monthly basis. If they need us more, we're there more. We're a phone call away always for the person, particularly somebody. If you bring in somebody without experience, our role then is more hands-on. If you bring somebody in who has some experience, we step back a notch, but we're still there to help out with anything that might be needed. We do that for the entire year. It's included in the cost that we'll quote you later on this evening. We also try to stay in touch with the board contact person or the board president, you know, two to three times a year, just to say, how are things going? Anything you need from us, let us know. And we're always available for phone calls too. That's a part of the services we provide.
Timeline.
I'll talk the timeline though, let Sheila finish this up here. But we know you're looking into next year. And so, and you're the first group we've talked to. So that's great. You're going to be first out of the chute, at least from our firm's perspective. So we'll probably just be available for questions during the rest of this school year here if you need us. But the really big push will come in the July-August timeline where we'll begin to get your position listed, do the marketing plan and all the planning meetings. And then really hit the phases hard in the first of the year so that we will be coming in, being in the district visible very early in September so that we can meet with the focus groups and get the profile done. Now, Anne, we've got you finishing up October, November and approving the superintendent December meeting. We could actually move this up some, once we actually look at weeks.
Have it done by triple I.
I'd love to have it done by triple I because after triple I, everything gets crazy because we get into Thanksgiving and then holidays. And it's hard for you to get your schedules together. So if you would be willing to work to get that done by triple I, I think that would be great, don't you Sheila?
I do.
Because we have all the conflicts out of the way then. So you can say, we put December because that's a safe thing. But I think we could very likely get it done by triple I. And I think that's a good goal.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. I think that works. All right, BWP fees and expenses. The consulting fees would be $18, $9. I'm just reading the offices, it's an estimate. Don't you get there and you decide to play there to make sure that there's a consulting travel? Definitely won't be $500 if you live close.
We live close.
We live closer, it won't be that much time. Marketing, it depends on what you want to do, if you want to go beyond. We are a national firm. So when we put things on our website, they go out nationally. But there are other places that people will visit to drop, like WASA. They have a website where you can all get onto their job and to see national searches and the people out there. And I think that's about $250, something like that, if they're used. And there are others that you can get, Hamas, the National Alliance of African Women, payers, the Latin American. Then you have a total cost not to receive $20,000. We won't come, we won't hit that. We won't, we won't charge them. And then why? Why BWP? Why doesn't that be up there? Because we're going to be on call to the board, the office search process and beyond. We don't just drop you once you figure it out. We're here to hold your hand throughout the process. Sometimes we do treats, we adhere to help you with that with you. You're a new person. And then we have a two-year guarantee. We offer you a two-year guarantee. What that means is that if the person that we bring to you and you select, for whatever reason, it does not work out within two years, we will come back and do the search over again. We're free. We will charge you expenses, but we're free. We won't charge you a kick.
We're familiar with the area. As we introduced ourselves, we said that. And we've just finished a couple of searches in the area. So I think we know some good candidates.
Absolutely.
Record of success.
We're here in the state. We measure in the superintendent. It's all included in the fee. We're familiar with the general agreement. We're familiar with your community. This District 130, all of those around the area, records of successful searches in the area. And we have references. And we presented over 120 underrepresented or women candidates for search, for superintendent searches and for boards that have babies elected.
We like to do the work and we'd like to be able to work with you and find another great leader for the South Suburbs, right Sheila?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So that was quick, questions.
Thank you so much. I just want to point out for my fellow board members, we do have some sample questions that Maria was kind enough to print. We don't have to go through them one by one, but just some examples of questions. Thank you. And so I'd like to just open it to questions that the group might have. I will kick us off. Sure, of course. I'll just fill in the silence there. So you talked about your outreach plan for building the profile, the leadership profile and reaching out to stakeholders in the community. Can you tell me how you might reach community stakeholders, particularly parents? I know you said you offer multiple languages. How you might reach people that are just harder to reach? I mean, if they don't have a computer in the home or, you know, they just, just for whatever reason, working parents, young children. How do you reach the people that aren't likely to respond to an online survey or come to a meeting in person?
We're happy to offer a student session. Again, I've given them a few options.
Well, it's a cell phone. Everybody is cell phone, right?
So we're happy to offer, if you think that works helping your community and some additional people involved, because they would like this way to do. We're happy to do that. And we can do everything we're happy to do. We'll come and spend the day with you. We're happy to have parents who can worry and who have other one days. And we can be ready so that, once again, they, we get it. People have, they have obligations, show of charge, their obligations. And we try to erase it if they're able to. To make sure that we're able to, we just pay if we want to. Okay, so I want you guys to be able to be proud when you finish that week down. And the people who wanted to participate, you had an opportunity.
That's the thing right there. You can't force them to participate in it. But you don't want people saying it was a closed process. They did that. They made a decision in time, closed doors. They didn't include us. I didn't have a voice. I didn't have the opportunity to, you know, to say what I had, you know, what I was looking for. And so you don't, you don't, you, I use this term, take the teeth out because now they have nothing to fight back with because you made it an all-inclusive process. Everyone had an opportunity to share. But keep in mind, that decision is yours for execution. That is yours and yours alone. How you want to make it, however you want to do it, is your decision.
We're happy to talk with your staff too, about what you do with the staff.
Yes.
And so that we figure out, and just some of the things that they have learned on community, that seems to work. Again, we want you to be proud of that. We want you to do this very often.
So I'm sure you're familiar with, you've done your research on 130. Can you think of another district very similar to ours in regards to like the needs, the culture, the diversity? And then, so if you can think of a district similar to us? And then why has it been successful there? What about the superintendent has made it successful? What about the superintendent has made it successful?
I wish Omar was here to give another opinion to you as well. Omar is in a more similar district. He's a little bit taller, but security first. And he's been there, oh, six or seven years and done really well there. So I use his district as an example of a similar type of population, and we're able to find a great candidate for. And he has worked really hard at reaching out to the community and being available. He has been in homes and community meetings, those kinds of activities, to make sure that he's brought that community together. And I'm sure, I think it'd be fair to talk to him more about that. But that's why I'm going to tell you, I use as the example. And the good news is, he hasn't been on the team, so he can work with the new person coming in and share his successful fantasy of him, because he's been a great guy. This is a good district, honey. Because before he got there, I'm not trying to say it wasn't already, but a lot of good things going. There was a transition.
There was a transition. And, you know, and you ask about what makes it successful? It's what makes all of it successful, consistency. You talked a little bit earlier, y'all, people being on board, standing for consistency to pretend, lasting for a long time, consistency, opportunities to build those relationships with the community and with parents and families that he serves. I think that is the key.
Long-term, but that is, Peter, guys, everyone, you know, so many just fixed in Morocco through leadership, two to three years. You've worked, you did work. You know, you need to be there just for five to seven years, but you're like, you have to do some of that work that you want to do as a professional of the community and the organization as well. So that's our goal, which is to have the people, the consistency, I should say.
Thanks.
Can you remind me of our district? I know you said it.
Yes, district twenty. And, and he won.
Sorry, so is Omar the superintendent or he works for you?
Superintendent. He works for us.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
He's the third member of our, he's our invisible.
Oh, I might have missed that. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I'll fill in the silence again. Can you tell me a little bit how you ensure, especially when it comes to the interview process and the board decision, how do you ensure that the process remains fair and effective?
Well, we're going to provide you with some materials for the board. The leadership profile, let's start with that, because we'll make sure that you can match that profile. And you're going to do questions based on that profile in some other areas of the superintendent's work. And you're going to have a rubric to evaluate it among. We'll help you with the questions. And when you get into the interview process, we're going to, people talk to you about making sure it's fair, it's to spend the same amount of time with every one of you. You ask every kid the same questions. Now, some take a little longer than others to answer this, so there's some, there's some.
That would be a factor.
But those are some of the things that we will talk to you about across that superintendent too. Because the end of this process, you should be able to move forward in seven, I want to use superintendent. And that's not easy, not easy to get to that, but depending on your role and great candidates or whatnot, and whether they're a brain, those are some of the things that can be added to that.
No, I was about to say the same thing. We're actually sitting down to look at a little, to work with you, there's a ton of questions. And, you know, hopefully you can fix some of them there. But the people that we're going to review, they're going to fit that profile. So you're, you know, you're not going to be worried, you're not going to be, if you may be worried or have that little fear, but that's all it is, it's just nerves. You're going to pick the right candidate because we're not going to put anybody in front of you that can't be selected.
We want you to.
He's one of the matching personalities. That's the thing, like, it's the bit, it's the personality, you know?
Some candidates are a bit, maybe they even took you all the time, but really, it comes to you and that whole section of the seven of you that want to candidate.
It's like a marriage, remember that? Like a marriage. Okay, so like a marriage.
We don't have to get along.
Who else can I answer for you? Do you provide any kind of guarantees for the superintendent that was chosen or to leave within a certain amount of time?
We did two years. We'll come back. What we'll do is that we provide two-year guarantee, which would mean that we can come back and do another search for you at no cost, except for some minor travel expenses or office expenses, basically, there would be no cost for this paper.
Do you, can you tell us, once we have a second candidate and we're ready to work on the contract, do you do any connective assistance with setting sprinting goals as part of the contract?
We can, yes, we can work with you on that. But I think that's going to be something that you guys are going to work out. Remember I mentioned the retreats, once you get together, once the superintendent gets in. And also, you may want to think about moving the contract out of a lot of issues, wanting to bring your attorney in as well. But we can help you with that, which may want to bring your attorney in. And we are definitely around to help with goal setting if that's needed. We can definitely do that. Sometimes goals are developed by, if you have a strategic plan in place already, you know, where are we in the process? And what is it that you're looking for that you need to achieve those first two or three years? It's usually the rock over there. But yes, and then.
What are the board goals that you set?
Yeah.
I mean, your super.
So definitely, we can, we can help out, you know.
The lighting should all fit together with your strategic plan, your board goals, I mean, the superintendent's goals.
And your goal may be to develop a strategic plan. I don't know where you are in time, but we'll figure that.
I think we were retired in July, coming to the end of that. But that's kind of, that's kind of cool, though, because you're, when you start a new chapter, with a lot to build on, what kind of a new chapter do I have? We use a three-year, a year, and that.
Perfect, so that is perfect. That's good.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time and allowing us to come and present with you guys. And we have our members, Becky Kay and I, worked in Joliet. Not a big time, I'll leave you first, and this came later. But, you know, we all connected here. So if there's a call, if you have any questions, if you think of something that didn't come to mind, you know, both of us are going to be answering anything that you can ask.
We love the building.
Yes, it's gorgeous. You guys did great.
Oh, really?
Yes, great.
This is going to feel like a good candidate, I know, it's, it's, I saw your office. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much. And Peter, have a great one.
And Sheila said, well, I'll call away if you need, can you help with any other questions? Can I have your time? What are you talking about?
I guess she can talk to you.
Thanks, everybody. Come on, I'm sure you're not going to be bothered. It's all over.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
So just on the matter of the record and the recording, this is School Exec Connect. Welcome, and I'll turn it over to you.
Hey, good evening. I'm Dr. Ted Schen.
Dr. Dave, how's that?
We are representatives from the School Exec Connect, Executive Search Group. So we're going to go through, I assume you have the proposal, copies of that still?
Yes.
The original one?
Yes.
So we're going to reference that in a bit. We have a slide deck. I envision we'll talk for about fifteen minutes. If you have questions that can't wait, certainly let us know and we'll, we'll act as to you. But if not, we'll be fine at the end for questions. So a brief introduction of who I am. So I retired a couple of years ago from a unit school district, about seven thousand students. I'm in Yorkville, you can see, a father, family. In my career path, involved a lot of different organizations, still connected to those organizations. I am a certified executive coach, I'm also a plus and strength coach, and I do a lot of executive coaching as well. You see the successful searches, I mean, all different size districts, all different social status, diversity. But I've led a number of different districts in my last three to four years as part of School Exec Connect. Really excited to be here tonight. Excited to share our process with all of you.
I'm Dave Melzett. I want to thank you, start off by thanking you for this opportunity. Again, I've been the superintendent at Pleasantale School District in Western Suburbs, kind of Berridge, LeGrange area, for the last eleven years. I guess I would say I'm begin to, to Yang, right? It's large high school district, we're in a much smaller elementary school district. We've got about a thousand students, grades pre-K through eighth grade. Again, I was one of the four educators throughout the four that I have. I have a BA in bermillinois state, PhD from Loyola. Again, lots of different experience. And I think one of the things that sets myself apart, or maybe some of the other consultants that you see is, I am in the field, I am sitting at the tables with other superintendents who may be looking for opportunities. So being able to cultivate those conversations, have those relationships, really have some deep conversations about the benefits of this particular position and finding that right match, because I am the West Coast High ASA president, because I am the president of the Southern Superintendents Association, a member of Triple S, which is a national organization. Again, lots of opportunities to have those conversations and add this to the goals.
Obviously, you heard from another search firm, but I think we are different. And anyway, we'll talk about that toward the end as well. But you can see, you know, you're getting the two of us, because you're also getting sixty different additional associates in our firm. We've done a lot, a lot of searches, just like some of the other ones, I'm sure, that you've spoken to or looked at. We've done a big coaching for cultural development opportunities. You see the associations that we're connected with as a search firm. So it's not just going to be the two of us going back to our pool of candidates that we talked with in previous, previous searches. We are favored towards you. We're going to fit what you want as a board, and hopefully as a community. You're going to see that all, certainly the searches that I've done, that we have done, have been on time and on budget, because your timeline is important to you. We'll learn more about that, hopefully, as a collective group together. We have a really good success rate, that he's actually the first contact, after the first contract, the superintendent is still in good standing. That's important. You know, if you looked at the two of us, we were a one-year superintendent since the same district. There's something to be said about that. And I know how important it is coming in to work with all of you to make sure the consistency you have to do for a district. That's really, really important. You've had it since, what, twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen here? But you have a three-year strategic plan that's just been kicked off. That's going to be important to see where that, we have your negotiations, your contracts that are in place. So you have a really good starting point. And we want to make sure that we bring you along for you to be the most successful you can be. We're going to talk more in depth about a timeline, but I just want to talk to you a little bit about just the different phases. In the proposal, page eight, there are, when there was a person submitted to you that was an earlier start, we're not going to, obviously, we're going to change that, talk in October. So we are looking at December, January, we're going to engage with the board immediately. I would say if you selected us, if we had that answer by, by, by your board meeting next week, we could actually have your planning begin in sixty. Or we could then slow it by dates, the process, stakeholder development, we'll get into all of that. But it's as soon as you reasonably can do it. If that doesn't happen, then early January, we could have a special board meeting. And I don't think we have a board meeting till the end of January twenty, twenty-first. So we would have to make sure that we need much sooner than that. So we can get phase one party established and start working together. And then we're going to start looking at your superintendent profile. Again, working with all of you to create a survey, to meet with stakeholder groups. And that's going to happen in January timeframe, so that either by end of January or at your February board meeting, we're going to bring up the profile to you to approve, to say, this is what our community is asking for, this is more what you want. And then that's going to be used to certainly solidify our cool paintings that we're going to be bringing to you. So that's going to happen in January, February, and then February, March, at the latest, at the April twenty, twenty-first board meeting, if you want the approval of your superintendent. If you said, you know what, you got to do this by March, and then March board meeting, and we may have to figure out what we're going to do next, and we'll get it done. Okay? So if you turn to page eight in your search plan and your proposal, I disagree with what I'm talking about, what that looks like. So again, it's going to start with a signed agreement, and that can happen as soon as the board proves, as soon as we can physically get that done, we can begin the process. And then it'll be looking at who's the liaison for us to work with. And then to set up that meeting with the board, have that scheduled where we can actually create a timeline of an initial timing. So that's really opening the search. We're also going to talk about it as an open search or a closed search. Open search means that everybody knows the final three candidates. Since we post in the paper and wherever, through social media, the closed search is where the final candidates, the board knows. But then ultimately, until the final one is selected, it's not being called. So we'll talk through that process. Technically, we suggest a closed search, maybe we work candidates who are more apt to lead the positions that they're in, knowing that it's safe and maybe the current employer doesn't need to know yet, so those final people. Okay, we'll have those conversations with the board. And then we're going to get into phase B on your sheet there. And this is going to be in January, February, where we're going to start engaging the public. We're going to start engaging the board. And again, that's going to be the scope that you're all comfortable with. We would prefer to have one-on-one meetings with every board member. It can be in person and/or virtually. And we're going to ask you, the strengths of the district, the opportunities, what you're looking for in the next candidate or the next superintendent, and what should their priorities be when they take the seat in July? So those are the questions we're going to ask you to the board members. And then we're also going to start talking to your community members. And we're going to work with the board to say, which groups do you want to engage? Is it all of them? You know, you have twelve campuses, twelve sites. So is it all twelve sites? You have, you know, the various different bargaining units, how many bargaining units are we going to talk to? So all those things happen in the January, February timeframe. And that's how we're going to start to understand what the needs are, what the strengths are, what the opportunities are, so that when we start going to people, the candidates, they're going to ask us, what's the board, what's the board want? What's the community want? What do they want? What do the staff want? What do the kids want? There's no reason we can't be talking to kids. I've researched what I've done, almost every search, except maybe for one, I've had conversations with kids. I don't mean, what do the kids want for their business? We're not crazy to base it, we're the staff. Those are really, really important. So we're going to spend time doing that, so that when we come back to the board, we have a really good idea. So we're going to take that survey, we're going to create a survey too, and that from, I would say, as soon as we can start finalizing the timeline with the board, we can get that survey ready to go. And that'll be part of our timeline, we'll keep it open for two or three weeks. And then we're going to take those survey results, we're going to take all the stakeholder conversations we have, and we're going to bring it back to the board as a profile. And we're going to say, this is what they said in the survey, this is what they said when we talked to them, and this is what we need that we work. And I'll look at what they're going to respond to. So that's really the creating the superintendent, the new superintendent profile. The survey can be in multiple languages. We can post it on as many different places as you want, whatever you feel is the reach for community the best. And we can keep it open as long as you think it's necessary. We typically see it open two to three weeks. And while that's out there, we're having conversations with the schedule. And really, that then is the process in which, while that's going on, we're starting to develop the candidate profile. So as soon as the board signs an agreement, we are going to begin thinking about candidates that we already know, that are working on those places. We're going to reach out to our network of sixty associates. We're going to say, who else do you know who can play for this position? We're not going to obviously have that profile done yet, but we're going to start gaining interest. It's going to be posted on our website. We do that for, to make sure. We do that for, to make sure that it doesn't come through the district. And we don't want you to have to worry about employer requests. If the board gets emails, we're going to ask that those will direct you to us. If the board is not involved in the meeting with candidates, whether it's internal or external. We would like, we would suggest that you treat, if there are any internal candidates, we treat them the same way as an external candidate, they'll go through us, we can screen them, we can do the interviews. If you want to make sure that a candidate, an internal comes to you as a final, the slate that we eventually bring to you, that's your priority. Some officials do that. They just want to give that person the opportunity. Regardless of how we feel they did. So we're going to go through that screening of candidates in January and February. The profile is going to be matched, we're going to, we're going to interview the candidates all in person. We don't think that's virtual interviews unless they're out of state for some reason. But we are going to do face-to-face one-hour interviews. We feel it's important to understand final language, to how they dress, how they conduct themselves, what goes in the eye when we ask them a question. Is there anything in your past that you should be embarrassed about, that the board would be embarrassed about? That would be potential embarrassment to your community or to this community? We want to see how they react to that question. Because then we're going to start making, to make sure that the slate that we bring you eventually are all viable candidates for this role. So we're going to recruit, we're going to use all those organizations that we've talked about. With our network, everyone, I would say you'll probably get between twenty and twenty-five candidates, at least for this position. I think that's been the trend lately, is about sixteen, twenty, how that we see. Maybe interview thirteen or fourteen. Again, it just depends. We're certainly early enough that people are starting, once the holidays are over, to begin that process. Saying, what's next for me? They're going to be looking for job openings. And then we're going to do reference checks, both informally and formally, before we bring anyone to you. We have a lot of contacts in the field, so we're going to be able to call people up and just say, hey, what do you know about, you know, Tim, what do you know about AASIA? Our intent is to bring five to seven viable candidates to you, whatever that timeline is that we collectively agree upon. March first, we're going to bring those to you, five to seven. We will have a closed session meeting with you as a board. We will present to you all of their information of applications. We'll give the board president all the information of what are their preferences, and anything that they provide in the packet. The rest of the board will get all of the application with, of information that they submitted. And then we will also share all of our notes with you verbally. Might say can you the notes, but we're going to give a summary of each of the candidates. We're also going to do a breakdown of how many people total apply to the job, how many, what the gender differences, how many are in state, how many are out of state. So you're going to have a breakdown of all of that. We will also provide you and do for you a salary survey. We'll work with the board to find out what districts you'd like to be compared to for a salary. And then we will go out and look at the benefits and the salary and bring that report to you. So that as you did those seven candidates, not only do you have that salary study, you're going to have each of their information. So we're going to ask all of them, the interview workers with us, they have to provide all their benefits for the current salary. So we're not going to bring you someone that you can't afford. Because that's, you know, way, way above every other average in the area. Because that's a different conversation. We're going to have them, and then ultimately, if you select them to be interviewed, you're going to have them. Those five to seven candidates, you'll ultimately, as a board, if you decide whether you want to interview them or not. We hope you will. We feel we're going to bring you five to seven that are viable to do the role. But ultimately, if you decide not to, then we're going to let out, and we're going to ask them again, to make sure that you're comfortable with the people that were, were coming to you. And then finally, it's the selection time. And once, let's say, we bring those five or seven to you, you say, this is great. We've already agreed to find dates in which we're going to interview, so those are already established. And we're going to typically have a one-hour interview as an initial screening that the board would do for each of the candidates over two or three days, or two or three evenings, or sometimes more than a Saturday. We can be present for those, or we don't have to be. Again, that'll be a discretion of the board. Typically, then the board will narrow it down to three people, three candidates. And have a second follow-up interview. At that point, sometimes we would encourage an interview plus a fifteen-minute presentation, either on a topic of your choice or the topic that they provide, based upon maybe a prompt that we give. If we can, and work with you on what that looks like, we could provide that for you. We will do an interview training with the board, if that's something you desire. You know, an hour before a board meeting, or an hour after, or on a summer time, just to go over the news and the notes, and here's a list of questions. We can either help you with questions, we can provide you questions, or we can do the questions, or do you do the questions all by yourself? But that's the conversation we'll have as the times goes by. And at that point, the second round interview too, is how much stakeholder involvement do you want? Do you want committees of staff and community members and parents, where we, they rotate through with the board and then community and parents and staff, students and staff? So again, that's the conversation we'll have as a, as a collective group to decide what the process looks like as we get to the final slate, final slate of candidates. That's also something that I think the board should decide early on. We've seen it go a little bit sideways when the board says one thing at this stage, but then three months later says, you know what, we're not going to do staff anymore. You know, so, but I think either way, it's better to decide it now. So that there's transparency. You're the board, you can decide, it's your decision. But here's the reason why. And then ultimately, we're going to work with you to make sure that we remind you about, you start working with the attorney on a contract, or if you get towards those three final candidates. We're going to start talking to you about a formal background check. If something you want to hear as a, as a, as a more in-depth background check that the board could pay for, we'll talk about it in a second. If you want to do that, so as we get towards those three or four weeks salary, that certainly that second interview, that's the time when we need to start up those conversations. And we're going to walk you through that process to make sure that we're hitting out those timelines, those timelines along the way. We're going to spend a lot of time either. So it has to be a little bit of a fun process. It's going to be enjoyable. It's going to be hard work. It's the most important thing that you know as a board that you do, is hiring a superintendent. It's probably the most important, and maybe even anxiety, you're going to think to your staff and your community. As you know, it can, it can do a lot to a district, either positively or negatively. But, you know, when you look at your priorities and your three vulnerabilities of your strategic plan, there's a lot of exciting work here that's coming. So we'd love to be, be part of that, as we go down this journey with you. Again, this isn't about us and what we've done with all those other districts that we've worked with. I share that only to say that we've seen a lot, we've done a lot of work successfully, but a lot of districts. And ultimately, you guys have a set of core values, you have those core beliefs within your strategic plan that you created. We want to be part of it. We want to be, have those meaningful and trusting relationships. We want to make sure that we act respectfully and behave accordingly. We're never going to embarrass you as a board. We know that we're an extension of you wherever we go, whoever we talk to. And that's not going to stop at any point in this process. We're going to take it from the time you sign the contract with us to the end. We're going to make sure that whenever we're representing you, we're at the highest level, just like your, your leadership. Just like your vision, it's, we're going to, we want to build a trust relationship with you, we want to be collaborative. We love to be alongside of you. So you can see, you know, they are going to be very much, the questions that we ask are going to be aligned with the work that needs to be done in your district. So they're not going to be canned questions. Some of them obviously will be routine, but we're going to make sure that, based upon the discussions we have with the board members, community members, your strategic plan, survey results, all of that happening, those are the questions that are going to come up. Those are the profile we're going to look at. If you want an instructional leader, then we're going to look at that. If you want someone that's more financial oriented and operations, we're going to look at that. If you want someone that has to have all that, then we're going to use some magic, like that person. But it's not, it's not going to be a canned in one size fits all approach. We can't do that. If it's anyone's other, they can, they're, they're not going to be hacked. Because it is, it has to be tailored to go for. And we're going to support the individual movement. We want to make sure they're successful. We're both, two very successful superintendents. We believe, we want to make sure that you get someone who's successful. We want someone that's going to be here for a while, and just, it's not a short stop on a, on a long career path, or that a coach did last three, four years of retirement. I don't think that, you want to maybe take out it, but we want to make sure they're successful. So we're, we're not going to just say, you know what, you're approved in April and so long, and thirty. Or you're certainly in the field, in the field still, I still coach, I mentor, superintendents and principals and executives. So I want to continue to be that, to be true. That's time, we'll have a resource, we'll have an interview resource.
Yeah, so again, with all of that said, I did to kind of bring it home with some of the boilerplate information. But we want this to be a successful process. Again, like Tim said, this is one of the most important decisions the board is going to make, make for the longevity of the district or the success of your students. And so if we bring you a slate of candidates, that five to seven list, list of candidates, and you're kind of like, these guys don't really need this, this group doesn't really need our needs, we're going to go back to the drawing board, we're going to recast that map. We're going to be able to bring you candidates until you feel like you've got a slate that you feel represents your board, represents your district, represents your staff and students as well. Again, if that superintendent designs or is dismissed within the first two years of signing that contract, we're going to conduct that search again. So we want to make sure that we find the right person for the long-term. We're not the type of, of a firm who's going to come in, find you the superintendent, and say, say, all right, you're out, you're out of your own here. And then we won't recruit from, from your superintendent for the first two contracts. We realize that you want someone who's going to be in here doing this good work for the longevity. And again, looking at kind of robbing Peter, it almost not something.
So after year four, let's say they're in year four, second contract in a reasonable week, and they reach out to us as a, as a firm, we're going to tell them, no, you can't interview for this position, you can't pursue this, you're under contract for one thirty, we have an agreement imposed. But that's what that means. It's not like we're just going to, you know, even if they come to us, we're not going to use that individual capability.
So I was looking, I don't love this, because I was looking at it. So let's say, you know, our contracts, two, three-year contracts, right? So now they're six years in, right? They completed their two contracts. So maybe they don't reach out to you, but now they've completed their first two, will you reach out to them?
Again, any firm that has integrity is not going to reach out without interest. An individual will be without the show.
You're not going to reach back out to them, even though they completed their.
If you're being successful here.
Right.
Thank you. That's a really good question. Again, some of the fees, and again, you, you get a feel for pretty much what the all-in cost here is. So we're looking at fourteen-nine for the consulting fee. Those regular expenses, things like printing and eyelids and stuff like that, you know, not to exceed fifteen hundred. Advertising, you put up, you know, to be determined, because it really depends on how wide of an F you want to cast. If you're thinking more locally or regionally, it ends up being a little bit less expensive. If you want to do a national kind of countrywide search, then it becomes a little bit more expensive to advertise in some of those national publications. And then we do recommend you have a background check that is very, very thorough. And we do recommend that. Again, it's in the, it's a $80 fee for that third-party background check. As we, we steep into financial, social media, every type of list that you would not want, but can be given on, it would be so. So again, it gives you an idea of what the fee structure is for this particular service.
And simply that, that background check too, some of the boards are uncomfortable. They say, well, we don't really want to know about that kind of stuff. But what many districts have done is they will have the background check done, send the results off to the attorney, Mr. Cuthery, and say, look at the results, keep it on file. Is there anything that we need to be aware of? And in that way, that's a board, not, certainly the board, you're welcome to it. You're going to be right. Some boards just say, you know what, as long as our Mr. Cuthery, the representation says, there's, it's clean, there's nothing to it, then that's fine, right? We, we did our due diligence. And then the, the advertising too, even if we did a national search and you paid, you know, just for a dollar, or you probably, I don't know, it was like fourteen hundred. I think if you looked at various different organizations, like AASIA National, where there's a, you know, digital email glass, you know, for four weeks and some others. You know, that's where it would end up being, somewhere around there. But again, if you're not necessarily as interested in that national, a lot of it's free. A lot of the AASIA dot com, there's, there are a lot of things that is no cost to them. That we will, will work if you want to make sure that you get the network out there, but that is, it's a little costly.
And again, just to kind of wrap it up, some of the ways that we're unique in that, and Tim talked a little bit about this. You know, taking your strategic plan, taking your, your vision and your mission, and, and the things that are valuable to you and making sure those are part of the process, and those are part of the value, we evaluate the processes we bring candidates forward, is something that, I think, something that sets us apart from some of our peers. Again, the second one is member in, membership in state, national organizations. I think I had mentioned it during my introduction. I am president of Westbrook, I am a president of SSA. I sit on, basically, my wife says you got to untie that balloon from your hand, because I'm constantly raising my hand to join different organizations, to be a part of these different leadership opportunities. And those all bring us in the room with some of those leaders. Tim, again, through his coaching and mentoring and some of the activities that he does, we really have a network that I don't see other organizations having, other, other search firms have. You know, again, we are able to have this combination of kind of a retired mentor-type person and some of.
Still young, though.
Still young. But retired, but, but, so that combination in the field and having some of those long-term relationships as well. So I think that's some part from some of the other firms we may have seen.
Will be very successful. You're not going to have to wait a day or two to get back, or else to get back to you. Whoever the liaison is, and/or the board president, typically be the point of contact. And then have to be in contact through emails, through phone calls. We're going to keep the board, all the board members updated along the way. So as we, as we get into the advertising, as we get into the candidates applying, we will have a few meetings by which we can get to the board. You know what, it's, you know, January twenty-eighth, we have fifteen candidates that have been, that have submitted applications. So we're going to let you know how things are going along the way. We're going to let you know when we're going to do our first round of interviews. We're going to let you know, you know, we're going to have about twenty, and we're going to be face-to-face interviewing with. So we're never going to leave you in the dark to the end and say, well, we didn't know what was going on. That's, as we know, as superintendents, if one more member knows, the rest will know. It will work for you to make sure that happens on a time and a matter. And my, my, my firm job is to set forth, I have flexibility, to take phone calls and texts, and it would be that that's the case about the days. So flexibility is not going to be achieved. We're really excited about this job. This is a, is a great opportunity. You know, I love, you know, I came from a district that had primary elementary schools, middle schools. So I, as I did some minor work for this, it was neat to see, and it's kind of near, near to me. You know, I love your, some of the specialized program you have, you have as a staff of ordinary, and some of your campuses. It's just, it's just a lot, I think, we want to be shared in with candidates, and what we can bring back to you to make sure it's a good job. And we'd love, love the opportunity to be able to do that. We will open up some questions.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions from the board?
You have mentioned maybe, like in the second round interviews, having a candidate do a presentation. What would be the purpose of that presentation?
To see, can they put a line there together, how they interact with you, what their, what their comfort level is, talking to you. I've also had another district that I did in Elbers, where I did their search, where they asked the superintendent, the final candidate, the kind of candidates to create a three-minute introduction video for the district, that was their, that was their assignment. So they had to submit that ahead of the second interview. So it was really neat to see some of the creativity they had, some of the. So it was really neat to see some of the creativity they had, some of the excitement they had, did they do the homework of all the districts, did they really know of the districts? So it was just a way for them, for you to understand, have they done their homework, what are their values, where do they see their priorities as candidates come in. So a lot of things that you can read into, based upon what they provide you best by. They can be seven, fifteen minutes. The last district I just did, it's after a couple of times, they've got a dinner with the final three candidates, over three nights. So they'll have a dinner, more informal conversation, over food, but then they'll also do interview within that, before or after. So again, it's just, can they sit at a table and have a conversation with you? Just as you know, superintendents are at chamber meetings, and they're like, why is, they're there to meet, talk to a lot of people, they don't know. And if they do that, and they feel comfortable in a non-comfidential setting of that, that's another option too.
Do you have a hard number statistic of your success rate?
Mine?
The company, sorry, this.
Ninety-seven percent?
Okay.
Can we talk about community involvement? Have we decided to improve the community here with the board? When you said, after a few months, they wanna change and go a different route, what are their reasons to change their mind? It was more of, I think, political reasons, for someone to go to feedback in the meeting, okay, to change their mind. Again, I think it's best to, I personally always think it's best to include stakeholders along the way, or at the end. And I just think there's a, ultimately, it's majored fear by us, as well, or that your level of concern exists. There is effectiveness in that, which you did feedback. And again, we can, if you had stakeholders at the end, with three groups of three candidates, we can do it where they all have a interview with, you know, David, and then all of a sudden, they just hit some man on the Google back, it goes to the board, and then they have a discussion. So they're not a group saying, there's that, there's no voting that happens. We don't encourage voting at the committee, to say, oh, we want him. Because that puts the board in a really bad spot. Three groups, hopefully, if you get more personnel, and you have different needs, then maybe you'd be in certain groups. But, I think it's always for transparency, for your staff voice. And some do it just that, you know, they feel the community gets the survey to do, but then they wanna have more staff voice, or they'll be focused groups with their staff and students. And that's okay too, I think that's your priority. But those are the conversations we would have with you at our planning meeting. And really, what's the pros and cons, and really, if we've had conversations already about it, and we give our opinions on that. And then ultimately, we would schedule it out, we'd work with your leaders on this, the district. We'd probably spend a couple of days here, reading their combination of, if we need, we could listen, and take a lot of notes with that time.
Can you, can you tell us a little more, you mentioned by support, as a new superintendent, can you kind of walk through what that might look like?
It could be as formal, as informal, as you would, you would want. It could be signing up monthly meetings with the individual, helping with the transition plan, back to the day, work with the board on the transition plan. Certainly, it's gonna be as simple as just weekly checking the phone calls for a duration. Again, I'm not doing this for a financial gain, I wanna be back to your profession that we've spent a lot of time in, and we love, and women who are districts that care about improving, and you wound up the best person in here. So, it's really working with the board, and I don't know how much, it depends, I think, individuals, on the assistant superintendents, the two-person superintendents, you have a six-year experience that comes in. So there'll be a conversation that we would have with the board, of what that looks like, where they're coming from, are they out of state, in-state? And I also have, we both have mentors, other people that can mentor them as well, existing superintendents. So if they're from a different county coming here, they may not have a period like they had, where they're coming from. So we're gonna hook them up with people that do impact on how this is, within this region, that we have mentioned.
I mean, speaking personally, so when I was, got my first job as a superintendent, it was a school exact connect search, and consultants kind of stay on to support me as a brand and super valuable, just having that phone a friend, lifeline, to be listening to phone call, talk about how to handle certain situations, whether it be a staff situation, or candidates, or political issues that we're working through, and then also helping to network and connect a new superintendent with other people who can help support. So, a lot of really good options.
And I'm telling you, this is a colleague of whoever you hire, and I'm not, I wouldn't be asking for any money for this, I wouldn't, it's just something that you wanna see whoever comes in is successful.
So is there, like, a timeframe on that, or is it just depending on what the new superintendent needs?
Yeah, it was what I needed. Like, I still am in contact with the person who did the search, a lot of injuries involved with it. So, I mean, it's not as formal as it was right back then, but yeah, I mean, I wouldn't say there's a timeline.
Because you do a weed off process, they don't wanna talk to you in my. Or it might be related to, you know, I do strategic planning, planning as well, like I've done that for districts, for boards, and there's times where, once the plan has been finalized by the board, really that heavy lifting starts with all the goals and action plans, and how do we move along? So it might be that, maybe you need someone just to work with this individual on formalizing how it looks back to today, now what do we do now with all these goals and priorities that the board has given me? And how do we help them create action plans, and work fulfilling principles, lead those lineups, and the school improvement plans? And you do that kind of work. And I have people that I'm connected with, who are sitting superintendents, who love to do that, without targeting you, maybe just to say, you know what, I wanna help somebody else out, and who, like. We just talked about individual, we both know, a dear friend of mine, who's a superintendent at the board, but she works with other superintendents all over, all over the area, just because she likes doing that. Is that right?
I know, I just glanced at like your backgrounds, but the demographics here are very unique, very diverse, and they seem a little bit different than where you guys come from. So how do you think your background will help you help us, who I feel like are a little bit very different, very diverse?
Yeah, again, I work in West Cook, I work with every superintendent in West Cook, and West Cook is also very different, right? We are actually the southmost West Cook district, so I am also in contact with the South Cook superintendent. So, parts of that, Willow Springs actually is both South Cook and North Cook, so we have those connections with superintendents from all over the region. Tim had mentioned, we have sixty other consultants as part of the firm that we will rely on as well. This is the candidate that we're looking for, we're looking for someone that matches the community, and how can we make sure that we're using all of the resources that we have.
And I think as individuals, to me, it's about, we have the ability to listen to people, we have the ability to understand, there's things, what are we going on with these things? Things that have been culture, timing in the district, inside or outside the district. I don't think, because we've been other places, that doesn't take away our ability to understand. You know, I came from, as an educator, I was in Tinsville, and I came to Yorkville, which at that point was a very small, smaller community, I'm all property agent, and by the time I left, or sixteen years later, total, it wasn't much to it. So I think, but I was successful, but because, I think we can, we know how to interact with people, and we can talk to people, we can understand perspectives, and then we can share the rules of perspective with the candidates. So, I mean, I can politic or change where I've worked, or my experiences, but even the ones, the districts that I've worked for, the school exact connect, they're all very different. I just didn't want to, you know, following kids in a small, little town, and just stop them off. You know, so in the other band camp, they, they're diverse, and so it's just, it's a challenge. But they're also unique, which is great. And we're gonna hear a lot of stories, and we're gonna hear a lot of needs, and we're gonna hear a lot of perspectives. And that's gonna be a huge win for that new superintendent coming in, and that all-in communication. Because we're gonna be able to give that profile, and the board's comfort level, the survey results, to that new superintendent, and say, here's what they're asking for, here's what they said, thank you for what it's worth.
Are there any other questions?
Sorry, one more random question. Is Dr. O'Meara involved in this process with us at all, or no? Yes or no? Does it just be like you guys?
He's an owner of the company.
Right, so does he get involved at all?
I don't know, it's to you ask.
Oh, just one.
That is a thing, Matt, he's still lost to do the work.
Got it.
So just a quick, you will be our primary point.
This is it, you are, you are.
You are the key.
We're not, no, basic superintendent, you know, we are, good or bad, everyone's here, the one thing is to keep yourself down.
All right, are there any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
We really appreciate the time, and we hope you choose us and the board as the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we are going to move on in our agenda, moving on to agenda item four, which is a motion to go into closed session. We are going into closed session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of employees. Specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors, or specific volunteers of the district, and to discuss the superintendent's search firm options. So may I have a motion to go into closed, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, in a second. All right, thank you. Dr. McKee, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gassner?
Yes.
Yes. Your partner?
Yes.
Can we get in?
Yes.
Here's the line.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much.